And I'm. So Jonas, was you gonna?
Jump into roll call?
Yeah, we'll just go next to the next agenda item with Sandy and the roll call.
Okay, very good. So Valerie Switler.
Here.
Henry here. Julie Systrom.
Here.
Angela Blackwell. Larian is not here. Ellie Holskla. Ellie Van Norman. Alyssa Severson.
I'm here.
Deanie Smith. Diane Teeman. Jennifer Jackson.
Present.
Josh Davies. Christina Simpson. Lloyd Commander. Michael Cherry. Modesta Menthorn.
I'm here. This is Modesta.
Hey, Modesta. Sonia Moody-Horado.
I'm here.
Hey, Sonia. And Vanessa Baji.
Okay, do we have quorum?
We have seven tribal. Seven tribal members. Seven tribal representative present.
Thank you.
So I believe we have a quorum.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. Next on the agenda is, we wanted to give a recap of last month's work session that was held on August 10th. Alyssa, do you want to go to? Go first and then I could give a recap of the ideation session. After you cover the initial part.
Yeah, happy to. So I know we sent some materials out and I'm pulling them up myself on my phone. But we wanted to just kind of recap what we'd sort of heard throughout our full day session together. And so you've got these in your materials, but we captured kind of consensus that the tribal hub would really look to achieve the same goals as the early learning system, which are established with the Early Learning Council. So children arriving ready for kindergarten, families are healthy, stable, and attached, and that the system is aligned, coordinated, and family-centered with an addition of really maintaining culture. So there's some, you know, draft language attempting to capture that the culture of tribes of is fostered, preserved, and celebrated. I think there's a typo in my notes there. So that doesn't have to be the final one, but just an example of how to name cultural preservation as part of the tribal hubs goal. There'd been discussion about the purpose, so really thinking about what the tribes need at a high level, while really thinking about continuing to hold that space for individual tribes to make decisions. So looking at a model that works for the tribes that benefits all tribes, recognizing the four kind of key functions that had been discussed at previous tax, so making sure that the tribal hub fosters a grievance system for the tribes, creates a clear and more direct funding structure for access to resources, networking and sharing lessons learned, and then quality consultation and supporting that government-to-government relationship with the Department of Early Learning and Care. We talked a little bit about measurement, and so how do we think about the impact of the tribal hub? And what data is available, knowing that numerical data may not actually be the best way to indicate the impact and effectiveness of the tribal hub? And that really the tribes should determine what that looks like. So how do we maybe move into some qualitative data? We talked about kindergarten readiness needs to be more than just academic, but needs to include identity and belonging, and that that can't be done without culture. Similarly, culture could be woven into all of the system goals that we mentioned, as well as being a standalone. And then connections with the hub system. So we had heard from Carmen Ellis on our team, our Community Systems Director, about the current regional hub structure and thinking about how does the tribal hub fit in and interact with that regional structure, knowing that the tribal hub is statewide. And then we spent a lot of time kind of outlining questions as the state, as we think about what we're accountable to as the Early Learning Division, as we're preparing for the legislative session. So we've recapped kind of those somewhat more existential questions. And then we got to hear from April Campbell about the Office of Indian Education at ODE and heard some recommendations to really leverage their office and the reports they've created as we think about designing the tribal hub, taking the Senate Bill 13 approach and adopting the essential understandings and applying them to the tribal hub design, and considerations to utilize the TAC in different ways, thinking about how the Office of Indian Ed has leveraged some of the student success committees that have been established across the agency. And then finally, there were some kind of questions that we sort of put in a parking lot. What will it take to fully operate in 2527? How do we centralize the hub functions so that it's not one tribe taking the lead? What is the short-term versus long-term structure? And will the tribal hub expand statewide coordination beyond early learning? The other two things we had talked about were the resources that we have. So we have preschool development grant resources, as well as the general fund investment that we got with House Bill 2055. We'd heard that there is a desire to not just go with an equal division amongst the tribes. I reached out to April, and that is how OIE has been distributing dollars is equally a suggestion that April had was to look at maybe child data, which we would need to get from you all if that's a method you'd like us to pursue, or we could look at an equal distribution this time around. The other question was about a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So I've reached out to Business Oregon to see if they might be able to join since we are not the experts in kind of business development to see if there's someone in their team who might be able to join the TAC and give some additional information on how to establish a nonprofit, if that's the structure that the TAC would like to pursue. Jonas, anything I missed there?
No, I think you covered it all. Did you want to get into a discussion about any of that at this point? I know you said, I think you wanted to discuss the distribution a little more, or are you just sharing the recap?
Yeah, I don't know if there's time later in the agenda, but if folks have kind of thoughts, would welcome them. We we have a little bit of time. We have until probably mid-October-ish to be able to get the preschool development grant resources into a contract or an intergovernmental agreement to meet the obligation deadline by the feds. The general fund dollars, we've got more flexibility. So the real kind of pressure is if we want to get that full 1.2 million, which is inclusive about another 600,000 from PDG, we'll have to start working on intergovernmental agreements sooner than later.
The question that I had, Alyssa, was, you know, anything above $150,000 has to go to DOJ. What does that amount look like?
Yeah, no, great point. So when we done the even distribution, I think we came out to 139,000 per tribe. So we'd be under that threshold of DOJ. If we did a different method of distribution, and some tribes presumably would get more than 150, what we'd like to do is use the same DOJ-approved intergovernmental agreement language that ODE and OIE use, since it's been approved and we know that it's waiving a lot of the problematic language that was asking tribes to waive their sovereignty. So our hope would be to use those kind of pre-approved templates, that if it does go to DOJ, we've kind of cleared the path and it's really just looking at any new components of that agreement.
Any other discussion? Alyssa, do you want to come to a decision today on anything? Or do you want to save that for the work session later in the month?
I think if we can get some direction on how you'd like us to, we could, you know, we could do some things without a final decision on the amounts. You know, we can start working with OIE and making sure we've got all the kind of language lined up that has been used in the past and start the procurement process. If we wait to make a decision about the dollar figure on at the work session at the end of the month, I think that will be okay, but that's probably about as far as we can go so that we can make sure we get the intergovernmental agreements in place by the time we have to obligate the funds with the feds.
Another question, so it's the feds you're talking about. So that won't fall in line with the, like, the other state grants of ending 63023?
Right, so, yeah, so 600,000 of the 1.2 million, it goes until 20 through 2023, around, I believe, around June still. We just have to have it obligated. Actually, I will double check. We might be able to spend those dollars through 2024. So I'll check on that, Valerie. It would be on a slightly different timeline, I believe, than the state dollars. The state dollars, even though they do have to be spent by June 3023, if we don't get them into a contract until later, it would be okay, but then we would kind of forfeit the 600,000 in federal dollars.
How about we get a general feeling of folks that are on the call now with a hands up if you think that equal distribution would be fair?
I don't know if you can see me or not, but I say yes. I'm in transition, getting from one spot to another. I'm sorry.
Okay, and this is Julie, right?
Yes, Julie from CT Clussy.
Sorry that I came in late and, yeah, I'm for whatever's going to be most convenient and what the majority approves. Thank you.
Did anybody get a capture of how many that was?
Yep.
Three thumbs up, and then Sandy, you have, it looks like you have a hand up, or is that a thumbs up? You're on mute.
Valerie told me to raise my hand. Okay, I do what Valerie says.
So is that a thumbs up?
That's a thumbs up, yeah, okay.
There's four thumbs up out of the members here.
And then Sonia and Jennifer.
This is Modesta. I'm fine with equal distribution for now.
Thank you, Modesta.
This is Christina Simpson from the Coquel tribe. I just had a quick question, and I might have missed the first part of this conversation. So I don't know exactly how these funds will be distributed, but I know with our tribe and I think other tribes specifically, there is an indirect cost rate agreement that we have with the federal government that does, that pretty much any kind of grant funding or funding that we're receiving from granting agencies is typically applied to that. So I was wondering if that would also be applied to this funding, so meaning, you know, we might get 139,000 or whatever we end up getting. But I also want to be mindful of the tribal contribution to whatever grant funding we'll be receiving, so I just want to have that conversation, making sure that these funds are, will probably be distributed in the same way, and also clarifying whether that indirect cost rate agreement will apply to this as well.
Yeah, it's a great question, Christina. I'll check in with our budget and procurement team. I imagine, yes, on the federal portion, and then the other half would be general fund dollars, but I'd be happy to go back and confirm that with our team.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking with whatever funds we're receiving for the tribe, we will probably have to go through some process. If there is going to be a tribal match or whatever, we'll obviously have to go through some process to receive approval for that, probably through our tribal council. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about that as well, that we're having this conversation at this level, but there's also going to need to be a higher-level conversation with our administrative team and our tribal council, because we will be also probably requesting those dollars as well to just cover that indirect cost agreement rate.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful, Christina. And there wouldn't be a match required for these funds. So it would just be, and so I think with the resources and what had been talked about before is, you know, I think the idea is that because they're attached with establishing the tribal hub, they would likely go to covering the costs for you all to attend these meetings. It could go to the costs for kind of staffing and operations as opposed to new work and services. We wanted to make it kind of as flexible as possible, in part because of the very short timeline for you all to spend it, and because there isn't a tribal hub yet to, like, fund. And so the indirect rate, and I'm not a budget person, so I will confirm all this as a budget person, but you know, usually we see the indirect rate applied to the entity who's then going to go do the thing, administer the service. But because these funds could be used to, like, pay for all of you being here, there wouldn't be additional funds to cover your indirect, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that.
No, thanks for that question.
This is Nicole, and as a non-voting member, I'm just going to kind of offer my two cents here. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of such a small number of voting members kind of offering their opinion on how such a large decision should be made, given whether we're not to split equally amongst the tribes or to split a different way, such as number of children per tribe, just because at the end of the road, this is really going to affect children's day-to-day lives. Especially since the last time we took kind of a lay of the land, when we met in person in the Capitol, the vote kind of went the opposite way, more towards allocating funds depending on population or number of children per tribe. So I hate to suggest that we delay this decision further or make things more complicated, but given that this is a really important decision, I wonder if there's a way that we can ensure that we do get an opinion from everybody on the TAC, perhaps some kind of indication one way or the other from, you know, every single individual email from the TAC members or something, gay or nay, within the next week, just so everybody gets a chance to weigh in, and it's not just, you know, a small number of people. And that's just my suggestion as one of the consultants. Just so to keep the long-term perspective on this.
I look to you all. Happy to do that. I think regardless, we can kind of start down the path of getting everything ready. What I would offer is, in my opinion, the decision you all make for how to distribute these resources now, we can change when we see future resources, right? So if the ultimate goal is based on number of children, that can be a methodology that's folded into how the tribal hub distributes dollars. It wouldn't necessarily mean that we're now locked into the methodology going forward. It'd really be a a timing piece. What I don't know and would look to you all is if we go with the number of children methodology, how quickly you could get the information to us so that we could then run a formula, check it back with you, and fold those numbers into the contract. So that's the other consideration from an implementation perspective.
Alyssa, is it okay I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's Julie. She's from Cloney from CT Clussy. I think I missed the date of the deadline that we have to make this decision by, before we lose the $600,000 or $600 million or whatever it was.
I wish it was $600 million. Yeah, so we have to have the 600,000 in an interim governmental agreement by mid-October. So there, you know.
Mid-October is October 1516?
Yep, around then. We can push it, you know, if things aren't signed until the last week or two of October, but we need to demonstrate that we are kind of in that final negotiation phase and and are going to be ready to sign on that dotted line and show that the resources are obligated.
Because I initially, you know, I was one of the people that put my hand up to go with the equal amount for each tribe. And I, you know, I think that the concern that Nicole Willis, you know, share with us is that, you know, some tribes may not have any children and other tribes may have 1,000 and that kind of stuff. So, you know, I understand that and I recognize that. So I just don't want us to lose the money, is my concern. Because, you know, if we don't make the decision and we lose the money, we may not ever get the chance to have that kind of money again for the children. You know, the children are the priority. So I don't know, you know, what anybody else's turnaround time is, as far as getting, you know, a response out of how many children you have per tribe and that kind of stuff. You know, I know it takes time to get those things done, so I don't know if we could get it done with, in between now and the October 1516, so I don't know what anybody else thinks. You hear what anybody else had to say?
Sandy from Cow Creek, as one of the people in the in-person meeting who expressed concern about divvying that money up equally, because some of us wouldn't have as many kids as others, and being on the side of not having as many kids as probably a lot of others had, that was my concern. That was where I wanted to be very equitable in regards to that decision. So what I'm hearing today is, one, we've got a very short timeframe, just like as Julie just said, very short timeframe to turn this money around. And two, as Alyssa says, this isn't a decision that is going to bind us into divvying up money equally from now on, marching forward with the tribal hub. So I have a tendency to want to lean in towards, let's get it done. So get it done before October 15th, so we don't lose the dollars. And then be more mindful as we're moving forward and looking at maybe, maybe a more equitable division of the dollars. That's Sandy's two cents.
I think that we also need to look at what current programs and services some of the tribes currently have. So you might have smaller tribes who might not have as many children, but in that as well, they might not offer as many programs and services, so could benefit more in some ways from an equal or larger amount than versus a larger tribe who might have a higher population of young children, who already has pretty established programs and services that provide those opportunities for them and their families. So I would just really like to think about this in a different way. I, you know, I come from, the Coquel tribe is not a huge tribe. And I think that we really have to talk about distributing this equitably, but also taking into consideration that some of the smaller tribes might not have as many resources available to them as some of those larger tribes. So I would just recommend that we split it equally. That would be my recommendation at this point in time with, you know, thinking about this differently down the road when those opportunities arise. So that would be my opinion on that.
Christina, that was a great prompter for me. April said that's one of the reasons OIE hasn't shifted away to a different model, is that they have found some of the smaller tribes do need more resources for exactly the reasons you've laid out. So thank you for mentioning that.
And I'm in favor of equal distribution. I think per child is difficult for us because we have centers in Salem, Portland, Lincoln City, and Salads, and serve a lot of other native children as well as community children, so we wouldn't be able to get an accurate count per child because we service from many other tribes and communities. So it would be hard to get an accurate number for us.
This is Angie, if I can speak. I really agree with what Christina said, and I'm coming from one of the larger tribes, and I'm agreeing with her for the same reasons, that there are smaller tribes that don't have the same resources or programs in place, and so smaller tribes with fewer kids might not have had these kind of resources yet to build a program. So I wanted to agree with that and also with what Sandy said. Going back to Nicole's comments, it prompted me to think about the agreements that we made when we created this TAC. I don't remember if it was bylaws or if it was something else, but we specifically talked about who can make a decision for this group, how many tribes need to be present, or how many people need to be present. And I feel like we should be able to move forward if enough tribes are represented in what we agreed on initially, that we should move forward with the decision. I know time is of the essence. And not only is time of the essence, but this isn't the first we've been hearing about this. We've known this has been coming for many months. Thank you.
Can I just double check with whoever took the roll call? I'm not sure, but I think that somebody said that we had seven out of nine that were represented.
Sandy took the roll call, and yes, we did have seven out of nine, and then Christina Simpson from Coquels slid in. And Angela, Angie Blackwell slid in. So I was just looking at the tribes representatives, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, we have seven. We have seven tribes represented.
So seven out of nine, we're good, right?
Yeah. Okay, so based on the the flow, the discussion, and then, you know, the things we discussed, the timeline and what everybody's saying, it sounds like the decision then would be to yes for equal distribution at this point for the 650K. It's just for documentation purposes. I just want to confirm that.
Sorry, and I don't want to interrupt, but I know Angie has had her hand up again for.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Angie.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Sandy, if you had seven tribes before I got here and nobody else from Grand Ron this year, do you now have eight?
We had seven members.
Sorry, thank you.
So then again, clarification.
You should check my math always.
How many tribes, how many tribes we got? We got seven out of nine?
One, two.
Burns isn't here.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
Warm Springs here?
Yes.
Burns.
That's Val. Klamath, Salads, Grand Round, Kus, Coquel, Cow Creek. I think just Burns isn't here.
Yeah, just Burns isn't here.
So we got eight. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm documenting TAC agrees to equal distribution. Okay, thank you all for that discussion, and thanks, Nicole, for the additional prompt. I think that added some other insight that was missing. They kind of reminded us of what we discussed from the work session in August. Yes. So I had another piece to the recap. I will go through it quickly, but we are kind of falling behind the agenda, so I will speed it up. So let me share my screen. Can you guys see my screen?
Not yet.
Let me try again.
We got it now.
Okay. So if you guys remember, at the end of the work session in August, we did a brainstorming session or an ideation session, whatever you want to call it, but what we ended up doing was kind of taking that and putting it down into PowerPoint slides, so we don't have to haul around the posters anymore, and kind of extracted some of the key themes or some of the key insights from that work session. So I'll just kind of run through the results for you quickly. But what's good about these type of sessions or these type of brainstorming exercises? It just helps document ideas and helps us kind of. Um, and helps us kind of let, lets us know what to keep in mind as we move forward and. Um, in the process of creating the implementation plan. So if you remember the first question or one of the questions we asked was what functions should the tribal hub offer? And on the right here are the sticky notes that were provided to us during um the ideation session. And then on the left-hand side here, I just kind of based on the groupings that I, that we kind of agreed on. Um, I kind of extracted key themes from those sticky notes. The, the numbers you could kind of ignore. These are not in any particular order. So that you don't need to pay attention to the order of, of the themes. But one of the key themes, and these are kind of. Are in addition to what we've already discussed, right? Like the grievance system, networking, the funding. So this is kind of either reinforcing those. Functions that we've already discussed or at least adding to them. So here are the key themes for this particular question. One is funding. Being able to um offer services or at least add uh for operations around some of the services the tribes are already providing. Or that they can apply to or that um get access to. The second theme that kind of came through the sticky notes is uh communication and networking. I think the tribes are eager um to get to that kind of coordinating and alignment amongst themselves. And within each other to um, to kind of move some of these uh. These programs forward um for early learning. Another key theme was application assistance. There, there's duplication of applications or at least applying for them. That people have called out. So maybe streamlining that process a little bit will be helpful. And then also one that was called out multiple times is data collection. Uh, maybe the hub um can help with kind of. Telling the story or telling these um, the impacts of, of these services. Um, through data and maybe the, the hub can help with the collection of that data. The next question is what orgs and programs do you envision being included in the tribal hub? We received many responses on this question. Um, and some of the key themes that came out of there were the tribal departments and programs themselves. The existing um programs we seen through what Carmen was saying, how the hubs are organized. Um, they usually align regionally with other either third-party um. Organizations or state departments or programs with the, and then what we've learned is that tribes also have their, their own programs and departments in place. So those would be some of the key um. Some of the key organizations that would be included. Some of the other um callouts were culture and language departments. Um, health was a big one as well. Um preventative care and mental care, mental health care. Um, and then access to addiction resources. Who do you want the tribal hub to impact? This is kind of an obvious question, but uh the, the key themes were the, the tribal members and the community itself. But also the parents, um and of course the children, the um for early learning. Why is it important to have a tribal early learning hub? Culture um was the key theme here. Representation. And then tribes um have unique problems, our tribal communities have unique problems that the existing. The existing hubs are not necessarily addressing. Equally across the regions. How should tribal early learning hub demonstrate or reflect culture? The, the key theme here, one of them was it should be included throughout and woven throughout all of the different. Uh, programs and departments and all of the different services that the tribal early learning hub offers. Um, language has been a key theme as well um throughout a couple of these questions. I know Valerie brings it up and it's very important um that we include language as part of, especially for early learning. Curriculum, building uh culture into the curriculum, into the work plans. Um, and also people have called out that it's going to help with identity issues, values. Making sure the children know that it's okay um to, to be Indian, to be um to represent their culture. What makes the travel early learning hub unique? Tribes um come with a different point of view. Um, so the hub will come um with a different point of view. Culture. We've seen that a number of times as well, um that, that makes what we're doing here unique. Um, and also the communities themselves are unique. So they have unique problems and also unique solutions. So I think um that was a little kind of the last theme there. Um, okay. So the last thing we did was we took all of the text from the sticky notes. And kind of use that as a source data and we created a word cloud. Um, this is, a word cloud is just like an easy uh data visualization that will kind of help us. Kind of a similar exercise tease out keywords or tease out key themes that we want to keep in mind as we move forward. Um, and you can see in the word cloud, a lot of the stuff that we just discussed, it really comes to culture. The bigger the word, the more, the more often it was mentioned um in the data. So culture, impact, um health. Children, community. So these are all like good themes that we need to keep in mind um as we move forward. One that should be in here, it's not, you can see kind of the data's jumbled a little bit, but language um is also um one big ones that should keep in mind. So yeah, I just wanted to kind of recap and remind you all some of the ideas that you guys put down um in the work session. And just let you guys know that we have it documented and we'll be keeping these things and considering them as we move forward. Okay, sorry. I hope I didn't take up too much time, but now I think we could move on um to the next agenda item, which is. The tack uh breakout session. So it'll take twenty minutes for that. Gabby, are you able to move folks to the breakout?
Yes, um I did have one quick question. Did you, Jonas and Nicole and Randy, do you guys also have to be in breakout sessions?
No, it's just the tech members.
Okay, perfect. That's what I figured.
Jonas, I know I offered and we were putting the agenda together, but happy to skip my Delk update. To gain some time back at the end of the agenda if needed.
Yeah, uh so let's see what time is it? Three forty-four. So about. Twenty minutes from now. Four oh five or so, everybody will be back and I think we'll jump into the uh. Planning for the. The September work session. And then we'll see how long that goes. That might take the rest of the time then.
Yeah. And I might lean on you a little bit to facilitate. I'm trying, we have a six o'clock with. Childcare providers and traffic is just getting worse. I'm gonna start.
Yeah, no, I think what I'll do is just share my screen and um. If we get stuck, I'll just use your high-level agenda that you had as a guide to trying to um prompt folks. And then we'll see how far we could get with the planning.
Perfect. And I'm here if you need me to chime in anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then Alyssa Severson, you should have gotten a notification to join breakout room two.
Randy, Nicole, I'll show you really quick what. I'll bring up. It's just a simple table. Just to help start planning um the work session for later this month, both days. We'll start figuring out what, what each session is going to look like.
Are you gonna send out that, are you gonna send out that um? Debrief that you just walked through?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we could send that out after. Um, in the tech minutes.
All of a sudden, it feels like fall in Atlanta.
Same here a little bit. Evenings are nice and cool again.
Yeah, we just, we just switched yesterday.
I don't think that's a groundhog. It was really big. I guess groundhogs are big. But it's out in the daytime, weren't they?
They do, they do.
You know, its home was probably under that rock.
No, it was running across the road. I thought it was a raccoon. So I went to give it a hug. But then I noticed it had no tail. And then I thought it was burr because I saw its face. Then I noticed it didn't have a beaver tail.
I think it's a groundhog then. It could be, I forget what those things are called. No, it's a. It looks like a, it looks like a beaver, but it doesn't have a tail. And they're bigger. They're not normally North American, though. They're more like South America. But it's Detroit. Who knows, who knows what happens in Detroit? It looked like a groundhog.
Canada's across the street could be smuggled.
That's true. It could be escaping.
So this is Modesta and there was four of us in one of the meeting rooms, but we didn't know what happened to the others or if we were. Placed in someplace that wasn't supposed to be open.
Oh, I did two separate ones because I wasn't sure if you guys wanted them to be like uh half and half. Oh, no.
We, um, we need to meet together.
Oh, gotcha. Hang on, let me add everybody to the other one. I am so sorry, you guys. There was user error on my end.
We're back. Sandy, did you hear that?
I never, I never made it into a breakout room that had more than three people in it. Julie and I and Modesta.
Gabby's combined, there was, there's two rooms that were created.
Oh, gotcha.
And she's combining the rooms now.
Yeah, you guys should have all gotten a, another. Cause everybody moved to the first room, but since you guys left.
Okay, okay. It was like a horror movie, as Julie said. We were just kind of sitting there waiting for the chainsaw to come get us.
I'm so sorry about that, you guys.
Then Modesta left. It was like, I don't know, should we stay? We're gonna assume that the breakout room is going, discussion's going well and they'll come back and we'll move forward and do great things. Cause I don't think you can put us, can you put us in there now?
I don't think so unless I move everybody to the second room.
Yeah, no, we're good. Don't, don't do that. We're good. Yeah, we're good. Yeah. So I, I just admire your courage to even, you know, attempt to move people around and run to meetings.
No, you're good. So uh Jonas, do you want me to just close out the rooms? I'm so sorry, you guys. That was definitely um my fault.
Yeah, we could wait until um the other room folks start coming back.
Yeah, I would wait because they, they might be having a lively discussion, just not including us. It's all good.
Yeah, I can join theirs just to see because I know their concern was that you guys weren't there. So they genuinely might just be waiting for you guys. So give me one quick second. I can join theirs just to see because I know their concern was that you guys weren't there, so they genuinely might just be waiting for you guys. So give me one quick second.
Mr. Randy, are you dispensing justice with a heavy hand? Or is that next week?
That's actually next week.
Excellent, excellent. Are you looking forward to engaging in the process? Or are you gonna try to get out of it? What are you, what are you doing?
Well, they won't have already tried to get, have already used up all my exemptions. They won't let me out of it. So I'll at least have to go through. The process of number one, seeing if they're gonna call me and then if we get to war there, then I'll have to go through that.
Right.
I don't mind it. I've, I've served on a jury probably fifteen years ago as a murder trial. And in Georgia, if you serve on a murder trial, you don't have to serve again for ten years. So they, they lost me in the process for the last four or five years. So I was getting away with it up until recently.
Gotcha.
Then I started getting these notices. This one, they just laughed at me when I tried to get out of it.
Well, I'd be able to just keep jumping from state to state. That way they'll never really catch up with you.
Yeah.
Sonia, my friend, am I gonna see you in Grand Ron tomorrow?
Was that for me, Sandy?
Yes, yes. Sonia, my friend.
Well, I wasn't sure. It kind of broke out on my end.
Well, I was gonna say, I slur sometimes. Are you gonna be?
I was just telling Val because I noticed her still in her office and not traveling. I think I'm gonna be on Zoom tomorrow, but they're Friday.
I was gonna say, I'm leave, as soon as we, if we ever get done with this meeting, I'm hitting the road. Dead north.
Like everybody is back. Is that correct? Did? Did you learn anything, Gabby, when you're in the breakout?
I think I really just interrupted them. I didn't jump in with enough time to really learn yet.
Okay, Valerie, are you guys all back? I think.
Uh, yeah, I think.
Okay.
We are, yeah.
Is there any recap or anything you want? I know the rooms got split up and it wasn't the full group, but so I'm not, did you have anything that you wanted to bring back to the whole group or? Or is everything okay?
Everything's. Okay, we did discuss it a little bit. However, we did bring one of our teammates up to date because she wasn't able to attend last time, but.
Okay.
You know, we, that's pretty much what we did is we were, and then we got talked about babies and that was it.
Says the recap catching everybody up and then little networking. Okay.
Well, that's a nice way to put that, Josh.
Getting to know each other. Okay. So the, one of the other main things. We wanted to accomplish today was to get the tax input. On the upcoming work sessions that are scheduled for the twenty sixth and twenty seventh, so all day work sessions. So let me reshare my screen and we could try to. Get your all's input. Let me know if you guys can see. Yep, okay. So this is just a simple table so we could start capturing, getting an idea of what that. The, the day of the twenty sixth and the twenty seventh is gonna look like for us, what the work session is gonna look like. I put some basic. You call them bookends in here based on the previous work session in Salem. Where we, you know, we do the welcome, we do a roll call, we have some time blocked out for lunch. And we also have a closing and adjournment. I'm assuming the time will be eight AM to four thirty, like we did in Salem. But. I wanted to use this time in today's tack meeting to start capturing what topics we need to discuss. So. The team can start prepping any materials as needed. And then kind of assess and see if there's anything, any gaps that we need to take a look at. So. I guess at this point. Is there any specific topics or any? Thing, anything's going to discuss and decisions that you all on top of your mind that we can document. For the twenty sixth. The way I, I think we could think of something. Some topics early on, maybe some, some of the bigger rocks that we need to find, because those might help inform sessions later in the day or the following day. So is anything we need to discuss early on that will help kind of? I guess get us going to where we can make decisions and other topics. So if, any feedback or any, any input right now is what I'm looking for.
Are we gonna delve a little bit deeper into the things that we already discussed in August? Like dreaming about what that hub's gonna look like?
Yeah, so I, is, are you thinking Valerie, like the structure?
Yes.
I think that was a really good one to try to knock out right away too, because that will help inform. A lot of the other decisions, I think. And then Alyssa's from the state's perspective too. If there's any specific topics or decisions that need to be made from there as well. I know we discussed some of them in August as well, so.
Yeah, I think. Structure, you know, kind of. Function, so hashing out maybe a little bit more of what the tribal hubs will do, kind of getting that question like the so what for the legislature and then. Think if there's any more thoughts about how the resources we have now would be used and what future resources might do. I don't think we have to get super. Detailed, but I think that will help the legislature understand the role of the tribal hub going forward.
Okay, do you see those as two separate conversations, right, or decisions like one, the tribal hub structure would be one and then? Kind of the so what or what maybe the functions and the use of resources is another one? Or do you see those as combined?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Curious what others say. I mean, I think my guess too is so much this will kind of evolve organically as the discussion starts. But I think if we can walk away with some of those pieces defined, we'll be in good shape for the legislature.
Also trying to think about timing. Do you, do you guys think like a discussion about the tribal hub structure will take up like the whole morning? I, it kind of depends on, I guess, how everything goes, but like. Four hours, three and a half hours of discussing? Or do you see it more as two and then we could fit in another topic in the morning? Based on everybody's experience and work sessions.
Try, why don't you try for two and see how it goes? And if you, if we, if we need to, you know, be flexible and, and it takes longer time, but try for two and two.
Okay.
I think it's really important that we at least begin discussion of the implementation plan before the lunch break.
I think, yeah, I think this. All of these discussions and decisions will kind of inform on the implementation plan, but you just want to talk about like the, some of the deliverables, Nicole, and the timelines of that. Of the plan itself.
I think.
To kind of ground us and what we need to discuss.
Yeah, a little bit of grounding of the work and maybe some overall structure of the timeline might be good just so that. We can provide kind of a framework for everything for the rest of the topics, maybe doing that at the beginning.
Okay.
So maybe you could split the morning in three.
Yeah.
And then, and then use the afternoon to like, you know, revisit and, and readjust and that kind of thing, but get the bulk of the work done in the morning.
I think this one won't take as long either. It's kind of. Things that we need to do, kind of grounding everybody and what we need to accomplish. And then these will be the longer discussions and decisions that need to be made by the tech. So let's see, I also wanted to work in a break probably in between these two. So be a break here. Okay. Maybe this will start. At nine. These are just placeholders. We could always adjust these later and then. I'll go maybe hour and a half. Let's just put ten forty-five for now.
Let's. Let's, let's focus on topics for a second. So. Somewhere in this, I think we need, we need to talk about the staff and the structure of that staff.
Do you think that will be part of the structured discussion?
To me, the structure is whether we have. You know, whether we have. One hub or, or nine hubs. And, you know.
I think that's already, Randy, I think that's already been decided. It's one statewide hub. That's why I think the regional model, it seems like when you were reflecting last time was. A lot of the examples being lifted up from the hubs are what are the services that the tribes offer and that. The tribal hub isn't intended to replace that, but I look to this group if that feels right. I, I felt like we started to kind of go down this path of. Looking at the existing regional hub structure, but what they provide is community services and the tribes already do that.
Yeah, I just don't know that that conversation has taken place. And I know that we talked about it in our last. Discussion prepping for this call. But I don't know that this group has really talked about that. So that's, that's really what I was thinking about when, when you talk about tribal hub structure.
What I was thinking for the tribal hub structure. Part as well is, is that that where we need to decide if we want to go with the five oh one C three? Are we gonna use an existing third party? That type of discussion as well. I want to get the text in and your input.
Yeah, I don't know that you would talk about structure before you really even know what it is. So to Alyssa's point. If the tribes are all providing the services underneath the hub, then the question is, what is the hub? You know, what, what is it providing? So I, I think you need to, when I, when you talk about structure, it's kind of, what are the main functions of the hub? Versus what the tribes are providing maybe versus what the state may be providing. And I, I just don't know that you can start talking about, you know, legal form until you understand that.
Okay. So, so maybe this discussion's more. I think I heard the tribal hub functions. Rather than using the word structure. Does that sound better to everybody?
I think we're back to what it is.
Our form, it's the form.
Do, do you want to put in the same word that you use for, like you said, that the, the tribe already gives us certain kind of services? So why, why, why duplicate? So I don't know. What, what, what is the hub gonna do? For, for the tribe?
Well, I. Does anybody else have a take on that? What their understanding was? Is there one tribal hub or are there nine tribal hubs?
It's one tribal hub. That was my family, one.
What, what I, what I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I thought it was one and that we all, um. We all participate in it or contribute to it. Are the, the services are, whatever services that it's gonna create that, that they are applied to all nine tribes. I don't know if I got it right or wrong or not.
I think that's what Alyssa's bringing up. You know, we, we had a conversation pretty high level. That it's, you know, we want to have a statewide hub. It's gotta have representation of the culture of all nine tribes. But the question is, what does it do versus what are the tribes do in terms of providing services?
Yeah.
So maybe that's the conversation that. You know, this, this, this is all about. Alyssa, did I get that?
Yeah, I think, you know, what I think we learned, and I, I know Carmen was maybe gonna hop on so she can jump. Then, you know, the, the early learning hubs, the regional hubs, they're not service providers, they're conveners. And so I think similarly what I heard in August with the tack was. You know, the tribal hub is. Providing those functions that we discussed, it's the source to receive and distribute funding and access resources. It's promoting that government to government relationship with the Department of Early Learning and Care. It's promoting and preserving culture amongst the nine tribes and it's creating that grievance process and. As sort of another arm of that consultative relationship with the state.
That sounds wonderful.
So I think that's the discussion you're talking about there, Jonas.
Okay.
Then, then I think you can talk about. Kind of. Legal form and organizational design. I know in August, we, we, there were questions about. Where does, where does that, you know, staff, whether it's one person, two persons or three persons, where does that staff reside? Who provides, who provides that capability? And, you know, we volunteered to pull together kind of a, a. An initial role description or job description for kind of the director. So we'll, we'll have that ready for your review during this session.
I think. Well, let's maybe, let's put a break in here somewhere. I think that will be the discussion in the afternoon. These, that will kind of lead, give us a buffer to of. In case any of these other discussions go longer. So I won't try to pack the, the afternoon like we did the morning with multiple. Multiple topics. Okay. So let's, I think that would be good day one if we're able to. Hash out a lot of these topics and make some decisions. And then let's discuss day two. Unless anybody has any other feedback on day one.
Alyssa, thank you for clarification.
Well, I hope it was helpful. And if I, and, and if I took anything away that was incorrect, obviously, please correct me. I've been trying to make sense of it in my.
Okay. Let's go here. And I think. Having a quick day one recap in the morning. To remind everybody the decisions and what was discussed the day before. Would be good. So then starting around. Just put eight thirty for now. We could get into other topics. Let's see. I'm just scanning some notes to see if anybody. Has a topic on top of mind, let me know. I'm just scanning some of our recap notes from. August.
Hey, buddy.
Randy, I recall you had kind of three big buckets of work.
Randy, I recall you had kind of three big buckets of work and that's what prompted the. Discussion about work groups and I just want to make sure that we're hitting the three buckets of work you'd outlined for us last month.
I have those, Randy. If you want a reminder.
Need a reminder, I'm getting old. Oh yeah, okay. So this kind of gets to that initial conversation we just talked about. The, the work. I was trying to, I was trying to get to a divide and conquer and we decided that we really didn't want to do that. But the three buckets are really what is the tribal hub? What are the, what are the processes? We talked about governance, we talked about. Government to government relationships, we talked about grievance. So I think part of what it is, what's in the tribal hub is. What are the, what are the processes that it needs to support? What are the primary functions? The other one would be the stakeholders, which would include not only the service providers from the tribe. But external service providers that we may. You know, also want to provide some sort of linkage and relationship management with. That's where I was looking. At the second work group B. And then the third one is really kind of, what does this really look like? And that's probably the least important for what we want to do today or, or, or next week. Because I think once we get. The, once we have a definition of what the. Processes and functions are. Then you can draw the lines between what's, what's the hub versus what, what the tribes are responsible for versus what the. What the state is doing. And I think you need to kind of have that one page view of the, of the operating model of how this works. So that's why here I was going through all kinds of gestures to let you know how important that was. So I, I, that's, that's what I. Was describing when I was putting that together.
Okay, I think on day one, we're gonna talk about the functions. But I think one that just came to mind, it's kind of related to what you have in here, Randy, on the, the stakeholders and. Maybe that's some of the, the operational oversight or. Maybe is that kind of like a topic we're thinking of? Like who are the stakeholders going to be? How, how's oversight gonna work? I think we discussed in August, having the tack is going to be oversight. But I don't know, is that something we need to hash out still or?
I, I think you need to identify who all the stakeholders are and then I think you need to. Have a, a role definition so that it's kind of clear what. What we expect of the hub as a whole. And then if there are future conversations with stakeholders, then you kind of have. A framework by which you're approaching them. The tack, I think we discussed early on and, and we reiterated last time. That the tack was going to be the governing body. It's kind of sitting over, over the hub. And that there would be some sort of staff, but I, I think we need to talk about what, what role that staff provides. You know, are they going to be writing grants or are they just going to be administering the programs that you have or they, you know, what, what are they doing? I think that's, that day one, that morning is really all about putting some parameters around. What this looks like. And I think each one of you. Each, each tribe probably has a different. I'm, I'm guessing, I don't know. Has a different set of. Of program participants that are tribal as well as local community. As well as probably regional or state. I don't know that, you know, I don't know that there's a lot of commonality just given geography, but I could be wrong.
Does the tack? Do you guys? Agree for that to be one of the topics of the work session and maybe it's just like. Role definitions?
Yes.
Think that's helpful.
Okay.
I'm wondering. We might have did this, did this at the last meeting and I, and I'm forgetting because there have been a bazillion meetings between now and then. I'm trying to remember, have we done an overview? Did we do an overview at the last meeting of what the other hubs are?
We did, I think Carmen covered a lot of that.
Okay.
Send that out too. She provided some, some materials. We could.
That's helpful. I, I'm on the learning, early learning council, so sometimes I don't remember, like, did I hear this and learn this in a different meeting or was it in this meeting? So I just wanted to make sure that that's helpful because not that I believe we're going to mirror those hubs in any way, but just to get ideas of. What they look like and what they do. And so then we can kind of, instead of starting completely from scratch. Look at like, are we going to be doing that? Yes or no? Or do we need to add different things? So thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. All right. So then going into the afternoon, let's just assume. That will take the morning, the role definitions discussion, defining what those look like. Going into the afternoon. What is another important discussion and decision that we need to have and make? Let's see.
This is a small thing to, to think about is just. Timelines looking out like, you know, what kind of deadlines we got to meet when, when, you know, within the next month with, you know, to end the year. What do we have to get done by the end of the year? What, you know? How, how far down the road do we have to look, you know, and prepare, you know, plan for? I don't know if you want to talk about that. I, I don't. I've never done this before, so I don't know if that's something you want to think about or not.
I think we'll do that. We'll cover some of that in the beginning to ground everybody.
But come back, come back.
Come back to it. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We could do it again just to. Remind.
Wonder if you want to tack on some responsibilities once we're finished too with those dates, kind of what we need to do. After the meeting to hit those deadlines.
Some action, action items.
There's, there, you know, there's so much that's gonna, that's gotta happen before the end of the year and we don't, we don't want to miss anything. So, and I don't, I don't know. It's, I, I appreciate that.
Good point.
And I don't know, I don't know how important it is that, you know, this governor's going out, we're getting a new one coming in. We don't know what the new one's gonna do in relationship to this program. You know, the, the one we've had, it seems like she's been very supportive of this kind of program and, and this kind of action, but. You know, I don't know about the three that, that are the possibilities for, for the new one. I don't know how they. How they see us and, and how, how they will interact with us. There's a concern on, on, for me on that. I don't know about anybody else.
Do you want to? And a note, I may already know the answer to this. Do you want to have any breakout sessions where small groups of you focus on a topic? So for example. We talk about, and it was very important on the, the flip chart. About culture, common culture. And I guess the question is, do we, do you want to have a group conversation? The entire tack talk about what that means to the nine tribes? Or do you want to have breakout sessions that come back and kind of present their ideas for everybody to digest? Because there's probably two or three of those types of topics that. Would, would best be facilitated by, by a smaller group of people getting in a room. And basically just talking about it and bringing it back for broader discussion. Or we can all get in a room and just kind of hash it out together.
I'm for staying together.
Yeah, I, I think we do better when we stay together. As far as moving forward with things.
I like that idea, but I don't think we're giving enough time for the tribes to consult among themselves. We, you know, we've heard a lot from you and Randy and. You know, Jonas and Nicole, but, you know, and we're trying to. Get some help on where we're gonna go with this. However, I don't know. If the tribes want to get there, get together at some point and talk these kind of things.
Do you want to, so Valerie, do you want to, on each work session, do you want to set aside some time? Whatever time you, however long you think you need for. Tac only, tac members only to discuss things amongst themselves.
You know, I think that would be okay at the, you know, either at the end of the day or the beginning of the day. I don't think that it needs to be every, you know, on every subject that. Cause you know, we'll get together and we'll talk about things anyway, but I would like. To see a time when the nine tribes do get together and discuss amongst themselves and, and. You know, and where I'm checking, I like to check temperature a lot, you know? How are we, how are we doing? How are we feeling? How, you know, and are, but are. Cause I don't want them to feel like as well, are we being, you know, pushed in a direction where. That isn't what the intent was.
Right. How, how long do you think, is an hour enough time or?
I think so.
Okay. We'll work that into the schedule.
I don't know. Am I, am I wrong, you guys or?
No, that's a good idea.
No, no, you're, you're spot on Valerie, we're good.
Okay.
I agree.
Yep. Okay. So you have three minutes left or two minutes now till four thirty. I think we got a good start. Just keep in mind, this is. I, I wanted to use this time to get your guys' input. If, if there's anything else that comes to mind after this. Please drop, drop an email and we'll see how it fits into the schedule. But what would, what we'll do after this is get together with Sandy and Valerie. Alyssa and the rest of the team to really start iterating on the agenda and the itinerary. And then start prepping for these work sessions as well. So we have everything we need to, to facilitate a good discussion for the tack. So anything else, I, I know we got some time still open here. In the afternoon of the second day, I, I know there's stuff to do, to be discussed. We just have to go back and, and look and. Because we're probably missing something at this moment, but. I just wanted to, before our time's up, anything else that anybody has? Input on for the, for the second day of the work session.
I'm thinking too, maybe in your open spot because, you know, we're delegates here. But whatever we decide and whatever we do, we're gonna have to take it back to tribal council. You know, because we're only, you know, ears and eyes and. You know, eventually we're gonna have to take this back to our, our representatives and, you know. And see and take their temperature too. It's, it's kind of like, I don't know. I'm, I must be a nurse or something. I don't know. I'm always thinking temperatures here.
Yeah, what I was thinking is that a lot of the decisions and outcomes of these working session. Will kind of summarize in a document or something that everybody could kind of take back to their tribe. To get the approvals and input from, from tribal leadership.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's four thirty. I know we had a couple other agenda items. Alyssa said we could. Skip those in, in favor of trying to get the work session planned in September. So that's what we ended up doing. So I think what we'll do is, like I said, get together with the rest of the team, Valerie, Sandy. Once we start getting a solid version of the agenda, we'll share it out with the rest of the tech members. And as I said, if you think of something that you think needs to be included in the agenda, please reach out.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, that's all I had. Any, any closing remarks or anything, Valerie?
Thank you, Jesus, and I hope everybody's that's going to D to G is travel safely and, you know, travel safely wherever you're going today and. Yeah. And I assist in the Lord's name, amen.
Bye, everyone.
Bye bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Bye.